Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Meeting for October 15th, 2024. If you could all please rise and join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour? Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
None from administration or staff.
All right, seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Brings us into public communications. We have two, several items this evening. The first item is the appointment to the Kent Special Events Public Facilities District. Council, you saw this item previously. So Circan Hepsner has applied and is being appointed to the PFD with Showware Center. So we are very, very grateful. Again, lots of opportunities for our residents to participate and ways to get involved, and we are always thankful for those. If you are interested in applying to one of our boards or commissions, please keep an eye on the website and on our social media and look for those openings. And council, that is on consent agenda this evening. The next item we have on our agenda is a proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month, and I would like to call Mr. Ram Servicella. Did I get even close? I apologize. So if you would like to come up, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. We'll do a photo and then have you say a few words. Okay, so you can stand right there. Thank you. All right, so the proclamation says, whereas the city of Kent is home to a significant Hindu-American population, and approximately 3.4 million Hindu-Americans live across the nation. And whereas Hindu-Americans in Kent represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of India, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Fijian, Caribbean, and European descent. And whereas Kent and our nation have greatly benefited from Hindu-Americans, especially through Vandada philosophy, Ayurvedic? Okay, classical Indian art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service. And whereas most Hindu immigrants have come to the United States as students in search of better economic opportunities or to unite with family members, while others have arrived in this country after facing religious persecution in their countries of origin. And whereas Hindu-Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to our economic vitality, growth, and well-being. And whereas Kent Hindu temples, organizations, and individuals actively engage in Seva and Sanskrit word for selfless, the Sanskrit word for selfless service toward their fellow human beings through charity and public service. And whereas despite their positive contributions to Kent and this nation, Hindu-Americans face stereotypes and misconceptions about their heritage and have been targets of bullying, discrimination, hate speech, and bias-motivated crimes. And whereas Hindu-Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, pluralism, and religious freedom, which are inherent in their beliefs and respect the diversity of all faiths. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 to be Hindu-American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Kent, Washington, in an order to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu-American community and to encourage all residents to recognize and acknowledge the significant contributions made by Kent residents of Hindu heritage to our city. So I want to just offer a personal thank you. The commitment to service is so apparent, and we are so grateful for that here in the city of Kent. I know I've had a chance to visit several of our Hindu temples over the years and have always felt so welcome. And that promotion of peace and service is apparent in everything that I have been able to witness, so.
Thank you so much.
Namaste, all. Thank you for this proclamation, and really, it is very heartwarming, and I really appreciate that on behalf of the Hindu community. So on behalf of the Hindu-American community, we accept and thank you, Mayor Dana Ralph, city councillors, and city staff for processing and awarding this proclamation of Hindu-American Heritage Awareness and Appreciation Month during this festive season of Navaratri and Diwali. This proclamation sends an impactful and meaningful message to the Hindu-American community in greater Kent area and helps educate all the Americans about our incredible traditions and values. Over the last few years, there has been significant growth of Hindu-Americans in the region, and we have been contributing to all aspects of public life to our vibrant and diverse social fabric. This proclamation brings the residents immense pride and gratitude to know that the city recognizes the contribution of Hindu-Americans here. I'm happy to share that the Hindu-American community in collaboration with various community organizations like HSS, SEWA USA, BAPS, Kent Hindu Temple, and others are engaged in driving a service initiative called a SEVA Diwali Food Donation Campaign during this festive season in greater Seattle region and contribute back to the local food banks and the undeserved in our neighborhood. Thank you again for the proclamation, and we look forward to continued engagement with city council on various committee service initiatives. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll take two more minutes. I would like to introduce our esteemed guest over here, Sri Raj Shoyiji. He is a resident of Kent, and he is one of the founding members of our Kent Hindu temple, which, you know, I feel very proud that Satman Devaji has also come, and you also have come and visited us. So we feel proud about that. He is one of the founding members of the temple. It started in 2002 in Maple Valley, but we moved in Kent in 2012, and he has been doing a great service to our community. So. Thank you once again for this proclamation, and we look forward for getting engaged with you guys in any way we can serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Right. Our next proclamation is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Katya, if you want to come up and join us, I'll read the proclamation. We will do a quick picture and then have you say a few words. Whereas National Domestic Violence Awareness Month was established in October 1987 to acknowledge and provide a voice for domestic violence victims and survivors, to advocate for legislation and protections for victims, and to educate leaders and encourage public awareness and action against abuse. And whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community, and on average nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of physical, emotional, verbal, and/or sexual abuse that affects millions regardless of race, gender, religion, occupation, education level, socioeconomic status, or sexual orientation. And whereas the city of Kent remains committed to a professional response to incidents of domestic violence and strives to change belief systems and practices that support violence and abuse that disproportionately affect women and other marginalized people. And whereas the city of Kent launched Project Be Free in 2023, the partnership with Project Be Free, a domestic violence resource for victims and offenders to assist in interrupting the cycle of violence. And in August 2024 alone, KPD made 56 referrals to Project Be Free resulting in 23 protection orders, 13 mental health connections, and helping families secure long-term housing. And whereas becoming a place where all people embrace the spirit of nonviolence and where people develop healthy relationships based on mutual respect requires the commitment of an entire community. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Kent, Washington, and encourage all residents to speak out against domestic violence, support the efforts of victim advocates and service organizations, honor the courage and resilience of survivors, and commit ourselves to standing with them for safety, dignity, and justice. So I would like to invite Council President Corr to come down for our picture. She has long served on the Regional Domestic Violence Task Force, and we're grateful for your service.
Good evening, Mayor Ralph, members of the city council, and community members. I am deeply honored to stand before you today on behalf of Project Be Free to receive this proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As an advocate, leader, and survivor myself, this cause is not just professional. It is deeply personal for myself and my team. I want to express my sincere gratitude for the city of Kent for taking this time amidst the important work of city governance and public service to spotlight this critical issue. Domestic violence doesn't just affect individuals behind closed doors. It impacts every aspect of our community. This year alone, Project Be Free has supported 542 families, residents of Kent, individuals from diverse backgrounds, including those most marginalized, and even police officers themselves. Domestic violence knows no boundaries. It affects us all. When families are in crisis, it reverberates through our schools, workplaces, healthcare systems, and legal institutions. Addressing domestic violence means investing in overall health and resilience of our city. We are especially thankful for the trust and attentiveness of the police officers who have been vital partners in our work, and we recognize the leadership that has allowed this partnership to exist and thrive. Our work isn't just about helping our adult residents. It's about aiding and supporting our youth in hopes of preventing the cycle of harm from continuing. By providing the necessary resources and education to young people, we aim to break these cycles before they take root, creating a future where domestic violence is no longer a part of their lives. This proclamation serves as an important reminder that domestic violence is not just a private matter. It's a community challenge that requires a shared commitment. I thank you for your leadership in making this issue visible and for supporting efforts to break the cycle of violence, ensuring that Kent is a place where all residents can thrive and find respect and empowerment. Together, we can create a future where no one has to suffer in silence. Thank you.
I want to say thank you for your leadership, your commitment to this work, for making sure it's something we're talking about. We don't, we can't fix things that we're not willing to talk about. So grateful for your commitment, the work that you're doing with our department. I cannot tell you, I've talked to many of our officers that are so grateful for the resource and the partnership. And I want to say thank you to council for your continued support of Project Be Free and the work that they're doing. So, thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is recognition of neighborhood councils, and I'd like to call Tracy Taylor up, our neighborhood coordinator, to talk about the two newest neighborhoods to our program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council president and members of the city council. I want to take a moment to emphasize how important the neighborhood program is to the spirit of our community here in Kent. This program empowers our residents, strengthens the connections, and makes Kent Kent. We've seen the positive impacts it brings, creating more engaged and safe and energetic communities. It's been a pleasure to help expand the program as it continues to reach more residents and create even stronger bonds between neighbors and city government. I'd like to introduce or actually recognize Village at Single Creek and Sunrise Meadows, both of which are new neighborhoods. We signed them up with Drinks in the Driveway, very successful Drinks in the Driveway this summer, and they were really excited about the program, and I'm looking forward to working with them here in the future. So congratulations to them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Boyce, you said you had some hard questions.
I let off easy. You did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is community events. Council president.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have community events happening at SSS Showware Center. October 23 through 27 is Disney on Ice Presents Magic in the Stars. Tickets are on sale, and I know that I am taking my kids there next couple of weeks. They're very excited about it, so looking forward to that. November 1st is Seattle T-Wards, and November 2nd is also T-Wards playing their ice hockey, and November 3 is Ramon Iola. And November 7 is Air One Worship Now Tour 2024 with Crowder, We the Kingdom, Kane, Passion, and John Reddick. And November 15 is Los Temerarios. And that is all the events happening at SSS Showware Center, and if you haven't been, the tickets are available at sssshowwarecenter.com, and you can check out their whole list for the year available on there. That is back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The 38th Annual, hard to believe, 38 years, but the 38th Magical Strings Celtic Yuletide Concert is coming up, and tickets are going fast. So the concert is Sunday, December 8. Go online, get your tickets before they sell out. That one's always a great concert each year. And then Republic Services, we've had our last mini recycling event, but for those of you who still have things at home, Republic Services, November, let's see, November 4 through 8, that week, you can put out on your curb up to 10 extra containers, the regular-sized garbage containers of recycling and trash, and they will take those away for you free. Well, in your monthly charge, not charging extra, not free. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Boyce?
Thank you. I just want to give another plug for the Thunderbird game at SSS Showware. I took my grandkids to the game last weekend. Very, very exciting game. They just loved it, and they played against Portland, and they have this, they had this thing that they say about Portland, and my four-year-old granddaughter, she missed it on the first time, but after the third and fourth time, she was yelling it loud and clear. But hey, very, very exciting game. Those young boys play extremely hard. So if you want a fun event and a nice venue to take your family to, it's really a lot of fun. So I encourage you, if you haven't been to a hockey game, it's really nice. So just want to give a plug for them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is our Public Safety Report, and joining us this evening is Chief Padia.
All righty. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, my pleasure to bring you this month's report. It'll be rather brief, but all good. We have some new officers we want to introduce and some awards we want to talk about that we bestowed recently on some of our officers. So we'll start with a couple of the swearing ends. If I could have Officer Fabiano Landy and Officer Terry Cobb, please come forward. Right next to him, up there. There you go. A little closer. Try to get a shot, get a shot, guys. There we go. All right. Very good, very good. These officers are actually not our newest. We have another set that we graduated last weekend, so we're still, to your question earlier, Councilmember Boyce, we're still moving with hiring. But tonight, we get to introduce our Fabiano and Terry. We'll start on the left for the audience, right for city council, with Officer Landy. We'll talk about him first. He is a product of our Corrections Officer CO to PO program, so Corrections Officer to Police Officer program, which we've had a lot of success with, where people come in, start corrections, get some experience and training, and then move to field operations and law enforcement. So he went through that program. Officer Landy is from, born and raised in Sao Paulo, Brazil. He has a degree in Electrical Telecommunications Engineering from the University of Sao Paulo. For over a decade, he worked as an engineer, making the life-changing decision to move to the United States in 2000. to the United States in 2014. Upon arriving in the United States, he ventured into entrepreneurship by running a franchised ice cream business and establishing a consulting company focused on helping clients build businesses from scratch. His dream of becoming a law enforcement officer was always something at the forefront, something he always wanted and aspired to, and in 2020, he joined the Kent Police Department as a corrections officer, and in 2023, moved through the CO to PO program to where he is today as a Kent Police Officer on the law enforcement side. Officer Landi said he chose Kent because it's one of the most, because it's one of the most diverse cities in Washington, and he believes that his background, along with his fluency in Spanish and Portuguese, will allow him to contribute positively to the department and the community. He noted as a fun fact, before attending the police academy, he completed the Wildland Firefighter Academy and trained with the State and National Guard. This unique experience not only prepared him to fight crime, but also equipped him to tackle wildfire season in our beautiful state. So he says that he looks forward to the journey ahead. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Fabiano Landi. Officer Landi, do you have people you want to introduce, your family in the audience here?
I have my wife, Eliana, I have my daughter Isabella. Three kids at home, I have twins, they're four, and I have Luca, his two.
Lots of free time and rest. Come to work to rest, I got you. All right, well, thank you. Next up, I want to introduce Officer Terry Cobb. Officer Cobb is originally from Los Angeles, California. He is one of 11 in his family and comes from a very diverse family. Terry lived in Kent on and off since 2003, so he's got roots here. One of his first jobs was here in Kent, and he remembers playing basketball as a kid at the Kent Commons. Terry graduated from Thomas Jefferson High School. Prior to Kent PD, he worked for King County for eight years. He says that he chose Kent because of, he is very familiar with the city. Kent has always been a community he's been involved in, and he wanted to give back by protecting and serving his community. His loves include basketball and music, and fun fact about him is that he is a girl dad who does cheer and dance with his daughters. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Officer Terry Cobb. Officer Cobb, you have family in the audience as well?
Yes, I have my beautiful girlfriend Dominique in the back. We have four daughters, but it's a school night, so.
Another guy who doesn't get any sleep. So, well, welcome. Mayor Ralph, would you do the honors, please?
If you could please raise your right hand if you have to me. I state your name.
I, Terry Cobb Landi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The State of Washington.
The State of Washington.
And the City of Kent.
And the City of Kent.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations.
And that I will obey the rules and regulations.
Of the Kent Police Department.
Of the Kent Police Department.
All right, that makes it officially official. Congratulations.
At this point, I'd like to ask Officer Taylor Burns to come up front, please. So last week Friday, we actually had the same thing. We'd like you to turn your back to the council and face the TVs. Yes, you've had practice at this tour. All right. So last week Friday, we held the formal ceremony and awarded Taylor this award that I'll speak to, and so there was more official ceremony, pinning of the medal and all of that. But we also wanted to ask Taylor to come up to being recognized in front of the community and the council in addition. We think this is a big, big deal. So we are here tonight to let everyone know that Taylor has been awarded the Medal of Honor. It is the highest honor that a Kent Police Officer can achieve, and in the 135-year history of our police department, the Medal of Honor has only been given out once prior. Those of you who've been around with Kent for a while might remember the name Chris Bregg. He was the first to win that honor, I think, back in like 2006. So what qualifies an officer to be given such a high honor? Our policy, and we actually have a policy, imagine that, says that this award is given only in those exceptional cases where employees perform an act of heroism that is above and beyond the normal call of duty and is performed at extreme risk of personal safety. You guys have heard me speak multiple times about how I believe that law enforcement is and continues to be one of the highest callings that a human being can achieve or call or answer, and amongst all the incredible work and sacrifice being done daily by our officers, our correction staff, and our professionals support staff, there comes those rare instances in our history where one of us is faced with the prospect of living up to the highest demands of our mission, and that means being willing to put your life on the line to help someone else. Taylor answered that call, and we'll talk about that. I do want to note that there were several people who responded to this incident to help, including members of the community and our firefighter brothers and sisters, but for tonight's purposes, I'm going to be focusing on the actions of the Kent PD officers. So on August 24, 2024, dispatch advised that there had been a plane crash in Lake Meridian. A landing seaplane had hit the water, flipping upside down and submerging the cockpit underwater. Officer Burns was one of the first to arrive on scene. He jumped into a private boat along with firefighters, and being first to arrive at the plane, Officer Burns stripped off his gear and uniform to jump into the water. That's an interesting point, because I don't know if Officer Burns has prior lifesaving or water rescue training, maybe he does from his military, but if you take that training, one of the first things they note is never, never, ever get in the water to rescue someone if you can avoid it, because it literally means you're potentially going to get drowned yourself, and that happens. So this was a big moment. He didn't hesitate. He and the firefighter found the cockpit of the plane, it was closed and intact, they couldn't get the pilot out, they took turns holding their breath, diving underwater, attempting to break the glass underwater, which is really difficult. The rain, wind, cold water, and leaking fuel creating difficult environment for them to see and operate in. Without any water or rescue gear, Officer Burns did not, like I said, hesitate and put his life at risk to rescue the pilot. After their combined efforts, 18 minutes from the time of the crash, they were able to break the glass, and Officer Burns pulled the pilot from the plane. He hauled him up from the water and into a Kent Police Department boat that had arrived to help. Lifesaving efforts immediately began, and medics performed CPR and were able to get a pulse back on the pilot, transferring him to Harborview for advanced lifesaving measures. Officer Taylor Burns's act of heroism and quick thinking directly led to the rescue of the pilot from a very dire and complicated scene. Tragically, Captain Alan Williams, who was piloting the plane, would not survive ultimately and passed away a few days later at the hospital, but he was surrounded by his family and friends when that occurred. So here's a quote from his family that they sent to us. "So we want to thank our friends and neighbors for the heroic call to action, as well as the professionalism shown by the Puget Sound Fire and Rescue and the Kent Police Department who risked their lives to help our beloved father and husband. Because of their combined efforts and the amazing care provided by the staff at Harborview Medical Center, we were given a few more days with him." I think they expressed that that was invaluable to them, to be able to see him before he left. So with that, we are proud to announce that Officer Taylor Burns has been awarded the Kent Police Medal of Honor. Just for the visual, if I can get it there. There we go. He has been given this already, but we wanted to present it again in time, like I said, so congratulations. Thank you. Taylor, you have family in the audience?
The big ceremony last week, I brought a gaggle of people, but tonight I just brought my wife, we snuck out for a date, so. These are the fancy things I bring her to.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, so congratulations.
I hope there's more to the date than this, right? Where's the military?
Navy.
I will hold against you.
Yes, please. Taylor's one of the officers that has to have like a separate room for all his awards, so I suspect we'll see him back at a future council meeting, so he does an excellent job. And speaking of excellent job, that same incident with the plane crash in Lake Meridian was responded to by other staff, and particularly Officer Randy Brennan and Officer Roland Haney. Their role in this is they deployed right away and grabbed the Kent Police boat, got it out there. They helped pull the pilot into the boat, and then while they were driving back, because the medics were on shore and not able to get to them, while they were driving back, they started CPR right away en route. They also were able to secure a rope around the plane and tow it back to shore so that later investigations can be completed to find out what happened. NTSB is currently investigating what happened with the plane, so we don't have the outcome of that. But further actions, quick thinking, and help to attempt to save a life here, they are receiving the chief's award for exceptional duty, and we have an internal process for giving those awards out as well. So wanted the community to know about their efforts. And like I said, we're short and sweet this month, but Mayor, I'll take any questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Economic and Community Development Report. Joining us this evening is our Chief Economic Development Officer, Bill Ellis.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you this evening. I wanted to just start off by talking a little bit about the Kent Valley and our community in the Kent Valley. We're working on a lot of partnership opportunities with our neighboring cities, and I just think this story is illustrative of how we're connected. Top Pot Donuts, you might be familiar with this brand name, is a well-known coffee and donut purveyor in the Puget Sound. Their manufacturing facility was in Tukwila, and then a few months ago, Mayor Ralph and I visited them after they had executed a lease to expand at the next available location for them, which was across the river from Tukwila in Kent, within the Kent Valley. So they signed a lease for 28,000 square feet for a manufacturing facility, and we worked closely with them through the permit process, and they opened, they had a grand opening on Saturday. For those who are curious, yes, you will be able to buy donuts and coffee directly from them, just not yet. In coming, sometime in January of 2025, they will have on premise with the manufacturing facility a, what they're calling the Foundry Cafe, so you'll be able to go in for coffee and donuts or take them to go when you're in the industrial area. And that line, the photo on the bottom right there, there's more than 50 employees there currently, they're going to grow to about 115 employees. They're expanding throughout the Puget Sound right now for retail locations, and this facility is going to have to produce 40,000 donuts a day, so it's quite a nice facility. Councilmember Carr was able to join on Saturday at the grand opening with the CEO Jim Eschweiler doing the ceremonial cutting of a donut, is what you want to do. I just want to also point out, within the City of Kent, we have over 173 food and beverage manufacturers, distributors, support firms. Just recently, we haven't been able to make contact just yet, but the Woods Roast Street, if you ever heard of Woods Roast Street Coffee and Bakery, another chain in the area, also opening in location Kent. So just adding to the diverse collection of food companies that call Kent home. So we have a very large and vibrant food business cluster. I see someone, I see Councilmember Boyce, you're trying to read them all, there are quite a few names. Yeah, several different sausage, sausage-making firms, several different bakeries, but everything from Conagra and Cisco and Aramark to smaller firms, whether it's Coral Salumi or Manini's. We have just the complete panoply on display in Kent, and is one of the reasons the Kent Valley is a thriving industrial business ecosystem. We just, it's very unique to have all aspects of that industrial cluster in some ways present in Kent. Just wanted to make a couple of notes also on just the health of the market. Kent has a lot of healthy activity right now. Vacancy is up ever so slightly in Kent, but is still performing relative to its neighbors healthily. You can see the vacancy rate now is at 6.8%. For 10 years, I've been coming here and saying hair on fire, we're at 0% vacancy, and 5%, so you understand, is a natural replacement rate. Now it's 6.8. We've added a whole lot of new buildings. We've added millions of square feet of new buildings, and those have been absorbed. Boeing last year, 700,000 square feet, lots of new leases in the industrial area. And so while we've had this healthy absorption, it is notable that we have a slightly higher vacancy rate than it was before. In some ways, this is good, because now we can actually talk to someone like Top Pot Donuts, and for years, I would say, we would have no place to put you, and now, because there's a normal churn happening within the industrial places, lands, we have places where those firms can be welcomed. So this is more healthy, actually, and more normal. I also want to point out that there's just been an elevated rate of commercial real estate sales activity. So as I was mentioning, the vacancy rate's up a little bit, a lot of that's in the 50,000 to 100,000 square foot category. The reason for that is that a lot of the e-commerce sort of sales that we've been talking about the last 10 years, that sort of mid-sized stockpiling of inventory, that's opening up. So that pressure's been moving away a little bit. But we've also seen interest rates come down recently, right? Finally, there was a lot of news last month, and that's enabled a lot of distressed properties to access financing, and it's also led to all the conversation of potential recession, soft landing, all these things that you might have heard in national news, has led to a lot of sales. There's a lot of property owners sort of cashing out the years and years and years of rent growth, whether it's in the multifamily category or in the warehouse industrial category, Kent's seen an elevated level of sales. The good news for us on that is REIT activity is higher, which is the chart we have displayed right now, thanks to finance. We have, you see the gray line there, dotted line is performing well ahead of the yellow line there from 2023 for REIT sales. So vacancy rates have been buoyed a little bit by the Boeing leases, as I mentioned, but a little bit harder than they were. but a little bit higher than they were. Shifting gears entirely, and we put out this announcement, but last time I think I was in council, I talked a little bit about our partnership with the school district. We've just a couple of updates there. We've passed a contract now for implementation of work for, with the school district on career and technical education. We'll talk more about that in months to come, about some of the work that we're doing with our neighbors to put together an employer table and executing memorandums of understanding with our local education system. Also, just as a means of update, the Mill Creek Collaborative, which was Kent School District as the lead applicant with several community-based organizations, including World Relief, Mother Africa and Central Rendu and the City of Kent in support. We made a submission of that to the Environmental Protection Agency for an environmental justice grant of $20 million. The rolling deadlines were until November. We hope to hear back in the next three to four months, but provided they don't tell us exactly when, we'll hear back, so fingers crossed on that. It was a big undertaking of many different departments and a lot of collaboration with the Kent School District for months and months and months, I think going back until March, until we hit submission sometime in mid-September. So a lot of work went into that, we were hopeful we'll hear back something positive. If not, we'll continue to work through the issues there, but we were hopeful about and proud of the effort we made on that. With that, I just opened myself up to questions about whatever economic, things, economic development you may have.
All right, questions for Bill? Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I always recognize you, Bill, you do a phenomenal job for us, bringing any type of business in Kent, I really appreciate that. Are there any things on the horizon that is coming this way that you allow to say?
There's always something on the horizon, I will say, nothing I feel newsworthy enough where it's a commitment and a signed lease. I feel comfortable when the ribbon ceremony has happened, but I will say that there are consistently manufacturers ringing our doorbell and I didn't talk about the space industry today, but that is also a growing industry and there's a lot of new defense and aerospace contracts, I've talked about that previously. And we're starting to see an uptick in sort of those contracts turning into people looking for facilities in the region. I'll say, I'll leave it at that because I don't think there's more to say at this point.
Once again, you do a phenomenal job, I really appreciate you, I think we all appreciate you, so really keep up the good work.
Thanks a lot, bud, appreciate it.
Yeah, I can, I can second that, Councilmember. So I get the pleasure of sitting in on some of these meetings when there's prospective businesses that are looking to locate in Kent and they're, they're looking for very specific reasons and it's the customer service and the ability that Bill and Michelle have to provide them with the connections. So saw that map of the food producers, always working to connect them with each other, businesses with suppliers and there, there are some amazing companies that are really looking at Kent for, for all of those reasons and it is absolutely 100% because of the work that Bill and Michelle are doing, so we're very, very grateful.
Can I have a, can we get a larger eye, a lot of print?
Oh, absolutely, I can share all of that with you.
Just to have on my own?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. One of the things I didn't share today, but we are hopeful to launch in November, is a revamped kentvalleywa.com or our shared website and we'll have some new business directory information up on there as well.
Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo what Councilmember Boyce mentioned, former president. Thank you, Bill, thank you for all the work and I know when I was at the opening on Saturday, the CEO actually mentioned the same thing. He was, he said the main, one of the main reasons he chose Kent was because of first staff. So thank you for, you know, getting in contact with businesses one-on-one and having those conversations and, you know, helping them go through the process because that's what's been very helpful with him, so thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I just want to also thank our permit staff for, you know, recognizing when a business is making a transition like that. It's a little bit like a hermit crab going from one shell to another and they can't have any period in between where they're exposed, so meeting the deadline is very important and our teams work closely with them and I think every time we have a successful transfer like that for production, it does create a word of mouth that I do hear about that is helpful, so all that thanks goes to the permit staff and others in the city, so thank you.
Did Madam President have any donuts on Saturday, she was there? Just curious.
I don't eat donuts, but yes, there were plenty of donuts.
Pat.
At the risk of inflating Mr. Ellis's head a little more, I just want to note that that Mill Creek project that he spoke of, that started in this room a little over a year ago when people, you know, students of Mill Creek and staff came to raise concerns about the field there and, and Bill really did kick that whole process off and guided both the city and the school district through that process, so a lot of that credit goes to that man right there, so.
Thank you.
I think we should give Bill a nice hand tonight.
Annie has knowledge about hermit crabs. I did not know that, that you, that they could not be exposed in the middle of that transition, so you learn something every single day. Thank you, Bill, for everything. All right, we are going to move on to reports. So at each meeting, we have an opportunity, everyone on the dais, to report out on the work that they're doing outside of the regularly scheduled council meetings, making sure that Kent is being represented in those regional, statewide and national conversations. I'm going to start, I've got three items this evening, so about a week and a half ago, I had an opportunity of attending the Retail Theft Summit put on by Challenge Seattle in Redmond and so elected police officers and retailers from around the county getting together to talk about retail theft. We are all very aware and have, I would say, all seen it happen, like people walking out of stores with carts of items that they did not pay for. There is some pretty strong partnerships happening in the region with both national retail organizations and local ones as well, working on all levels of retail theft. So there is absolutely an organized crime level and then there is that, that lower level, people stealing to supply a habit. So figuring out how do we work together, City of Seattle is doing some great things around prosecution, so we heard from them, we heard a very famous case, the Lululemon ring, the hundreds and thousands of dollars of goods stolen there, a variety of good news stories and then some bad news stories that King County continues to be one of the highest places in the state or in the country around retail theft. So a lot of work still to be done in this realm. I know that our police department regularly partners with our retail organizations on operations to try and, you know, put the word out that this is not the place to be stealing things, but a ton of, ton of work happening, so very interesting summit. Thank you to Challenge Seattle for putting that on and bringing those groups together. Also had an opportunity last week, several of us met with Congressman Adam Smith's both district and DC staff. We had about 16 people in the room, Chad joined us, Chief joined us, Pat. They were here really just to learn about the community, ask questions, ways that they can help. It was a very informative couple of hours that we spent with them, grateful for that outreach from Congressman Smith's office. He has been very supportive of Kent and the projects that we have going on here, but also one of the champions for public safety locally, reaching out on our behalf and South King County's behalf to get some much-needed changes there. So just want to say thank you for that meeting. Last thing I have today is Transportation Policy Board. So we continue to work on scoping of the next regional transportation plan, figuring out what, what we want to work into that as we move it forward. Next month will be a pretty important meeting, we're going to be talking about funding opportunities. So the, the previous regional transportation plans have relied heavily on the mileage charge. The legislature has not implemented the vehicle mileage charge, so that, that sets up a problem. We've got projects that need to be funded without a funding source. So at the next meeting, we're going to be talking about ways to fund regional and statewide transportation projects, knowing that that, that we're not optimistic that the legislature is going to move forward with that, so that leaves a pretty significant funding gap. So stay tuned as we explore those options, I'll make sure to bring those things back. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of quick updates over the past two days. Staff, Mayor Kurt, myself, others, Brian Levinhagen, we did, ran tours of the new BECU building for staff. I think we ran over 200 people through the building, I think, my feet hurt. I think we walked a few miles inside of a building, but the, the response is overwhelmingly positive from staff, they're excited about the opportunity. We have a long road to go to get into that building, but very positive response from the opportunities to really kind of create synergy with our staff and how we locate people in that building, so that was positive. And then the last thing is that we continue to work with Brianna to develop our 2025 legislative agenda and we'll be bringing that to you guys soon, so.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our council workshop earlier this evening and we talked about our 2025-2026 biennial budget presentation and we also had an update on 2025-2026 human services funding. Both presentations are available on our city's Kent TV21 or Facebook page. We also had our committee of the whole meeting, we had our annual presentation on write-offs of uncollectible accounts, which is a process we do annually to write off any bills and any fines that we were not able to collect. And we also had an item on the agenda for language access contract that we approved and I am very pleased with the work that we have done so far with the translation services and interpretation services provided to our community and it was, all the great data points are available on our website and our presentation on Kent TV21 or Facebook. I serve as Chair for Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Council and Growth Management Planning Council and King County Regional Domestic Violence Regional Task Force. Both, all three of those committees did not meet in the last couple of weeks. I do have Association of Washington City's Federal Legislative Parties Committee meeting happening tomorrow, so I will have that update at the next meeting and we are going to start with my colleagues here who are all serving on various committees and boards, so start with Councilmember Troutner, please.
Thank you, Council President. I am Vice Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. I sit on that board with Councilmember Lamar and Councilmember Boyd. We met on October 2nd where we recognized Fire Prevention Week as October 6th to the 12th, dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and injuries through prevention and protection education. We also approved policy updates for the 2025 to 2030 six-year capital improvement plan. We do have a meeting tomorrow where we will have an open hearing on the fire benefit charge. I also sit on the Regional Transit Committee and we meet tomorrow as well. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Madam President, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you so much, thank, Councilmember Boyce, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question for Pat. On the legislative agenda, I know it's early, are there any, do you think there'd be any major changes based on what we put forward last year?
No, I think that we will continue to focus on funding for public safety, that's our major focus and then basically as we do every year, monitor things that come up and get involved as we need to. That's what we're seeing right now for the major, major push, so.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, with that said, I represent the council on public safety, the chief did a wonderful job of celebrating all the good work that our police officer have do, that they do for the community and continue to do. Also, under our operation, we had a cooperative purchase agreement for the equipment that our police officer will be wearing, so we're going to be going to a new vendor and we're going to be getting better equipment and more durable equipment, so a lot cheaper and then also the turnaround is a lot faster, so the council was very happy to endorse that. Also for the SCE, I sit on the pit committee, don't have anything to report on that tonight, but there is a SCE dinner tomorrow, if you haven't signed up, you can still do so. It's going to be a very interaction, interaction around the apartheid, right, I think it is, so great conversation. So that's tomorrow at the Renn Pavilion, starting at 6 o'clock. Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Yes, Madam President, I also sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Governance Board with Councilmember Troutner and Lamar and because of medical reasons, I didn't attend the last meeting, so I have nothing to report out, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Frencher, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Public Works, we heard a report tonight on some grant money, some regional grant money that came in through the Flood Control District designs and all, for designing and continuing work on the projects and the Meeker Street Bridge is open, that's pretty exciting news and work continues on the traffic circles. Arts Commission, remember to get your tickets, you can go online and get your tickets for the Spotlight Series and the new set of traffic signal boxes, box wraps. All of those box wraps are now up and you can see those throughout all parts of the city, so take a look at those. And then as far as Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee and Kent Conservation District, no meeting since our last meeting, so nothing there to report, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Frencher. As you see, Madam Mayor, we are busy being on the table at all the regional committees and thank you so much to my colleagues for stepping up to do the hard work and back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is public hearings. We have three this evening. The first hearing we will have is the second public hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget, including identified priorities for use of opioid settlement funds. So Paula Painter, our Finance Director, will provide a presentation and then we'll invite the public to provide any written or spoken testimony or other evidence. Public input must relate to the topic of the public hearing and council members, as always, you may ask questions during the, during the hearing. If you are here to testify on this matter or present written statements, please sign up at the front table. So with that, we're going to go ahead and open the second public hearing on the 25-26 biennial budget, including identified priorities for the use of opioid settlement funds. Paula, if you'd like to give the presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor Ralph, Council President Carr, members of the city council. Today is the, I'm holding the second public hearing of the 2025-26 biennial budget. Mayor Ralph presented her proposed budget to city council on, at a special council meeting on Monday, September 23rd and since then, we have had several workshops giving opportunities to deliberate over that budget. The overall city budget for 2025-26 is $884 million and of that amount, $259.4 million is in the general fund. When creating the baseline budget, we looked at some assumptions for the expenditures for both '25 and '26. We had assumed a 3.6% COLA for employees for 2025 and 2.5% in '26. We didn't have any increases to our self-insured medical plans for either of those years and we did take into account our retirement rates for, for both of those years. For our supplies and services, those did increase by 2% unless there was a contract that was in place and then we made those adjustments appropriately to match the contract. We did have to make some increases to our insurance allocations for workers' comp, liability and property tax. This budget year, we actually ended the budget year in 2024 with 752.63 employees. During 2025, we're anticipating adding 8.37 FTEs and then in 2026, one more position for a total of 762 FTEs. Prior to the pandemic, in 2019, we had 5.6 employees for every 1,000 population. Today, we have not gotten back to those levels yet, we're at 5.4 employees or FTEs for every 1,000 population. And that is going to end my presentation on the 2025 biennial budget.
All right, any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Kim, do we have anybody signed up to provide public testimony or written statements?
We do not.
All right, with that then, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, the public hearing is now closed. All right, we've got two more. The next public hearing is the second public hearing on the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Program. Same rules apply, Paula will provide the presentation, council will have an opportunity to ask any questions, we will invite anyone up that's here to provide. provide testimony on this specific item. With that, I'll turn it back over to Paula.
Great. Thank you very much. So this is the second public hearing on the city's 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. This Capital Improvement Plan is part of the component of the Growth Management Act, which was passed by Washington State Legislature in 1990. To meet the requirement, the city creates a six-year plan, and this plan provides projects along with the recommended financing sources to meet the public facility needs that are required to maintain established levels of service. The Capital Improvement Plan is adopted by ordinance and updates the city's comprehensive plan. The first two years of this plan are included in the 2025-26 budget. You can get more information on the Capital Improvement Plan in the mayor's proposed budget book on pages 82 through 98. The capital plan is $236 million. And again, of that plan, $90.9 million is included in the 2025-26 budget. And this concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Council, any questions for Paula on the capital budget? All right, seeing none. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not, and I did not accept any, there were no.
No written.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. The public hearing is now closed. Our final public hearing this evening is the 2024 Tax Levy for the 2025 Budget. Again, Paula will provide the report. Council, have an opportunity to ask questions. With that, we are going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the 2024 Tax Levy for the 2025 Budget.
Great. Thank you once again. So this is the 2025, that's the page I need, 2025 Property Tax Public Hearing. The property tax is assessed by King County's Assessors Office. The numbers that we are showing for the 2025-26 are estimates. So we're still working with King County to get final numbers for the assessed valuations for both of those years. So everything that you're seeing there are, are estimates, and we should have those numbers finalized here soon with King County. As you can see, that the city's assessed valuation is roughly $33.87 billion for 2025, and about $35.56 billion for 2026. And right now, in 2024, the median home value is $535,000, which is down from $585,000 in 2023. Assuming a 5% increase in both of those years, based on the, the estimated assessed value, we're anticipating that our tax rate is going to decline slightly from 100, or excuse me, from $1.06 per 1,000 assessed valuation to $1.05 per assessed valuation. Again, that will change depending on how those final numbers do come in. In 2026, you can see it's anticipated to, to decrease slightly. What that would mean, assuming a 5% increase in home values for both of those years, that the, a median home, home value, a home that is valued at the median price, excuse me, will go from paying the Kent's portion of the property tax bill at $568 to $588 in 2025 and $596 in 2026. And that concludes the property tax presentation.
All right. Any questions for Paula? Okay. Kim, do we have anyone signed up or any written testimony?
None.
All right. Thank you. So with that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. The final public hearing is closed. Thank you, Paula. Item number seven is public comments. Kim, do we have anyone signed up this evening?
We do not.
All right. That brings us down to the consent calendar. We've got items A through M on the consent calendar. This is a compilation of items the council has worked on, heard presentations, and had an opportunity to have questions and discussion around at their Committee of the Whole meetings. And these things have passed out of Committee of the Whole without controversy. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0. Item number nine is other business. We do not have any this evening. Item number 10 is bids. Joining us is Chad Baron, our Public Works Director for the Willis Street Improvement Project Bid.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Always excited to be here for a bid and exceptionally excited to be here for this one. This one makes me feel a little bit old. We started asking for the State Department of Transportation for access to Willis Street from the property that the city's owned on north there, Naden. About 20 years ago, Mayor White was in office, I know, when we made at least two attempts, as when I was a very young engineer and was involved in some of those discussions. So through a number of further discussions, we were able to get that break in access and get a right-in, a right-out exit to the Naden property. Two things needed to happen in order for that to be approved. One was to remove the northbound to westbound left turn lane, or that comes out of the property. Let me get this one. That movement right there. We need to restrict that, and that's part of access control that the State Department of Transportation looks for whenever possible. And in order to take care of the businesses that are located south of Willis Street off of 74th, the second part of the approval was the roundabout at Fourth and Willis. This would allow people coming up from the south end from these properties, south on 74th, to take a right, make their way out to the roundabout, make their way around the roundabout, and then back out to the freeway. So it adds roughly about a minute worth of travel time. I did that just about a week ago, just to double-check it. Now, during heavy traffic, it's going to be longer than that, but during a typical day, it'd be about, about a minute to do, make that maneuver. But considering that before that, you'd have to sit at the traffic signal and wait for a green light, for much of the day, that could end up being a push. But we were excited to get this out. This is part of the basket of projects that council adopted from the ARPA funds that came through the federal government during COVID. And we were put out for advertisement, got six bids. A low bid was, came in from Strickland and Sons Excavation. They're working for us right now on two other projects. One was a Mill Creek excavation. Another one was around about 108th and 264th. So a contractor that's known to us. Engineer's estimate was, or excuse me, their bid was just over $2 million, and the engineer's estimate was just shy of $2.25 million. So good bids, again, six bids, they're all pretty tight, and we're excited to have this one going forward. Any questions?
Questions for Chad? All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Willis Street Improvements Project to Strickland and Sons Excavation LLC in the amount of $2,21,989.25, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is executive session. We do not have one this evening, so that brings us to the bottom of the agenda. I want to thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. And with that, we are adjourned.